Good afternoon. I'm going to call the Citrus County School Board meeting to order at 4 o'clock. We're going to call it 4 o'clock, even if it's not. And we have opening exercises by the Honorable Sandra Balfour, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Balfour.
Thank you very much for being here this afternoon. We have a spotlight on art. As we've gone through this week especially, it's been a week of appreciation. And I want to just say that it's very challenging for those of us here on the board to demonstrate our appreciation for everything that is done to make Citrus County successful. This month, we're just going to focus on art. And when I look in the room, I see art everywhere, not only just hanging on the walls, but with the shirts. I see the different shirts with different pieces of art. Logos are obviously art. There are so many ways that art touches us, and this is just some samples of art that I've seen throughout the district. So hit it. The bottom one is, every single person is touched by art, whether you realize it or not. Those of you that are here with us today recognize the value. And what I'd like to say... ...at the very end, it was wood. Wood is art. And that bench, that swinging bench can be purchased. For all of those that missed Mother's Day, this is your opportunity. Support Crest and show Mama some love by buying a swinging bench. So, how can you do that? Reach out to the Crest School, and they'll be more than happy to make sure that you can make Mama smile. At this point, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. You can be seated.
Well, I want to welcome you all today. We are excited. This is the days we look forward to because the business of the school board is really about all of you. And having you in this room today is just what makes our lives a whole lot better, and it brings into focus what we do. Before we get started, I just wanted to turn it over to Ms. Hemel, who wanted to just share a couple of things real quick.
As we have been through Staff Appreciation Week, I just wanted to recognize Ms. Ashlyn Ramirez from Hernando Elementary School. She has been recognized as one of the top five teachers in the state of Florida, so she's in the finest, which they will find out in July, the Teacher of the Year for the state. And this is the second time in three years that Citrus County has had a teacher in the top five. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Hemel. Before we adopt the agenda, I do need to add an item for good cause, and that is, I need to ask that in your motion to approve the agenda, would you approve and authorize the execution of an easement in favor of Duke Energy Florida, no jokes, board members, to install, operate, and maintain electrical service to the Floral City wastewater treatment plant? This will be for the needs of that treatment plant, and for time sensitivity and for construction, we need to add that. Great question. Let's add that on school operations. Yes, you know what? We're going to put it right under Attorney Legal Matters, and add that as an A item.
Under Attorney Legal Matters, A?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda with the addition, under due cause, to be reviewed at, under Attorney Legal Matters, Section A, for the execution of easement in favor of Duke Energy to install. Do you need Floral City?
Yes, that's fine. If you would, Floral City wastewater.
Floral City wastewater.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Powers, to adopt the agenda recommended by the superintendent with the addition of adding to the Attorney Legal Matters, Item A, approval to authorize execution of an easement in favor of Duke Energy Florida to install, operate, and maintain electrical service to the Floral City wastewater treatment plant. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. And with that, do we have any citizens' comments? We will have a second opportunity at 5:45. And then I just need to approve the consent agenda.
We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryan, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. If you could read the donations, please.
We have several questions today.
Oh, is it not? Okay. That's okay. Go ahead.
$2,000 donation to Helmissas Elementary School from the University of New England Church of St. Patochee. $2,000 donation to Helmissas Elementary School from the Women of Sugar Mill Woods. $1,000 donation to Citrus High School with J. M. Gibson of Camp Leal. $3,000, we had a $3,000 charity. Three cents donation to the Backing Free Scholarship donation to Citrus High School from Carl Schultz. Another one, donation, Backing Free Scholarship donation to Christopher High School from Carl Schultz, and the same donation to La Canto High School from Carl Schultz. A $700 donation to Marine Science Station from Citrus County Education Town Nation East. A $1,200 donation to Marine Science Station from Kings Bay Railway Club. The Weather Station Camera Products and Services donation valued $5,000 to Marine Science Station from Weather Stan. A $500 donation to Christopher Middle School from Daisy Price.
Thank you, Ms. Hurdarami. I want to thank all of our community members that provide those donations to our schools. I'd also like to thank all of the local individuals and organizations that again this year contributed to the hundreds of thousands of dollars in college scholarships at the senior awards that we've been attending. And I do want to give a special recognition to our own board members, Mr. Dodd and Ms. Bryan, for their work in their organizations and for giving up those scholarships this week as well. Well done. We appreciate that very much. And with that, we get to get to the...
And with Mr. Kennedy, thank the community for our local dollars for scholarships. Right now, we have a total of nearly $600,000 that has come from our local community for scholarships for seniors, and I think that's phenomenal.
Thank you. No, I'm glad you said that. So now we get to the fun part. So the first presentation we have is the recognition of Drama One, Act State Winners for Citrus High School.
Hey, Reg. Mr. Hilger, make sure the mic's on. I'm going to ring up front.
Hello, I'm Kristin Neander. I'm the Director of Theater at Citrus High School. This is the cast and crew of our one-act play, Sonny Durey's Life Flashes Before His Eyes. We competed at our district competition in December and received straight superior ratings, and were selected as the top play to advance on to the state festival. Only two get to get selected from our district, which does not just include Citrus County. It's Citrus, Marion, parts of Hernando, parts of Pasco, and parts of Alachua County. And we just competed in March over spring break. These wonderful children gave up six days of their spring break to be in Tampa with me. And we received straight superior ratings again, and two perfect scores, which was amazing. It's my 14th year at Citrus, and we've qualified students every year to go to the state festival. And for the last seven years in a row, we have taken our one-act competition on to the state level. We're the only school in Citrus County that can boast that, and we're kind of proud about it. So thank you so much. I have to say, Sam Hemel is an amazing superintendent, and Rich Hilger is an amazing principal. And we are very fortunate, all of the teachers at my school feel this way, that we have such a strong support of the arts in Citrus County, and how important that is to our children at every age as they are continuing to grow and decide what they want to be with their lives. Because I think we all know how important the arts are, but they really value it here, and we thank them. So I have certificates for my stuff. I'm not a fan of microphones. Nick Holder played Sonny Durey. Chase Davis played Emma Durey. Hunter Hilton played Mick Riley. They were my actors. The rest of the students that you see were all part of the technical crew. It takes a village to make our stuff happen. So Savannah Boudreaux. Miranda Kuchar. Anna Davis. Icee Din. Kevin Flaherty. Jojo Gregory couldn't be here today. Nicole Hale. Michael Kane. Kaylee Kennedy. Chloe Neander. And Shane Watkins. Thank you.
Guys, you may go right out. You can go right out. We totally understand.
Thank you.
By the way, since there were two other high school principals here, you threw the gauntlet down. They're going to be picking it up and challenging you all.
Let's go.
Our next presentation is a recognition of the FBLA State Placement Winner for Citrus High School Business Academy.
Ms. Cook and Raven.
I'd like to recognize Raven. And for those of you who are not familiar, Future Business Leaders of America is the largest business and career student organization in the world. A high school division has over 215,000 members nationwide. Florida is one of our largest states, and we do heavily compete at nationals on national organization. We are members of District Seven, which comprises Levy, Marion, and Citrus County. Raven was first in our district, and she went on to place fifth at the state competition. Now, I know our drama talked about arts. Raven uses her drama a little bit differently in a sales presentation to convince people to spend money. That was the selection that she chose. All of her work was done outside of class, so I don't know many students that will volunteer to compete and develop. She developed a sales presentation, a sales board. She offered her judges' samples and told them of the qualities of the product she selected. She did select shampoo and hair products, so she was quite successful at that. She placed fifth in the state competition, which puts her on stage and provided her a nice trophy. We expect great things from her. This was her first year at FBLA States, and she was on the stage, which is quite an honor.
Our next presentation is to recognize the 19 finalists for the State Science and Engineering Fair in Florida.
Ladies and gentlemen, when you pull up, remember take the certificate with your left hand and shake with your right hand. Okay, go and shake it if the chairman's scanning it in his hand, and then stay up here.
Good evening, good afternoon, school board members, Mr. Morland, superintendent, Mr. Clutter. I'm Dawn Moley. I am the science curriculum K-12 TOSA for Citrus County Schools. One of my major projects is the science fair. Our regional science fair hosts over 340 projects at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. Ten middle school students and ten high school students are selected to go on to the State Science and Engineering Fair. The purpose of the State Science and Engineering Fair is to recognize scientific talent in the precollegiate youth of Florida and allow these students the opportunity to network and collaborate, share their ideas with one another, as well as experts in their individual fields. There were a total of 840 science fair projects in the juniors and senior divisions, junior being middle school, senior being high school, in 13 different categories. Nineteen students out of the seven secondary schools from Citrus County participated in the 2015 State Science and Engineering Fair in Lakeland over March 31st and April 2nd this year. The students participated in the three-day event that kicked off with opening ceremonies. This includes a Jason colloquium. Jason stands for junior and senior outstanding narratives, and it provides an opportunity to introduce six students from across the state to share their experiences in sciences. One of those six students was a Citrus County student. We also were introduced to some young engineers from USF that are doing some cutting-edge research in prosthetics with 3D printing. The next day is all about the judging that ends with social at the Tampa Museum of Science and Industry, also known as MOZI. The third day was a field trip to SeaWorld, and then the awards ceremony on Thursday night. All of the students represented Citrus County very well during this trip. Let me introduce them to you. From Prista River High School, under the director of Principal Dr. Linda Connors, Scott Marshall, the site science fair coordinator, and one of the chaperones on the trip, Sherry Durham won the Merit Award in Senior Physics. She couldn't make it tonight. Caroline Dixon received the Association for Women Geo-Scientist Foundations Award. She also won the Florida Association of Science Supervisors Award, $50. And won the Merit Award Senior Earth and Space Science. From Citrus High School, under the direction of Principal Mr. Rich Hilger, and Jean Trescott was the site science fair coordinator. You had Max Seer in Mathematics, and Mary Tufts in Behavior on Social Sciences. From the Academy of Environmental Sciences Administrator, Mr. Ben Stoffcheck, and Nancy Pruitt was the site coordinator there. We have Emery Widman with a project in Computer Science. Justin Yoders with a project in Physics and Astronomy. Riley Dibble also had a project in Physics and Astronomy. Matthew Allen had a project in Environmental Science. Kelly LaPlante won fourth place for Senior Engineering. Jamie Costraw, who couldn't be here tonight, was chosen one of the six Jason colloquium speakers. She won a National Youth Science Camp Award Scholarship and placed fourth in Senior Chemistry. So that's our environmental group. From Inverness Middle School, under the principalship of Ms. Trish Douglas, Nancy Schaefer was the site science coordinator. She also was one of the chaperones on the trip. We have Tiffany Keane with a project in Environmental Science. Chloe Swinton with a project in Environmental Science. Connor Bishop also had a project in Environmental Science. And Emma Ballmer was awarded fourth place in the Junior Division of Environmental Science. From La Canto Middle School, under Principal Jason Coon, and Heather Wolfords was the site science fair coordinator. Liesl Villamere won the Institute of Food Technology Florida Section Award, a $100 cash award, for her project in chemistry and food preparation. From Citrus Springs Middle School, under the principalship of Mr. David Rowland, Deanna Hadley and Lorraine Gonzalez are the site science fair coordinators there. We have Michelle Bino, who won the Merit Award in the Junior Environmental Academy. And next, from Pope John Paul II, under the directorship of Principal Mr. Christopher Myers, and George McGeeok, the science fair coordinator. We have Jacob Waika with his project from Embotany. Emma Butler was awarded Honorable Mention in Junior Earth and Space Science. And Lauren Parrow won fourth place Junior Mathematics. Congratulations to all of these students. They invested a lot of time and hard work and dedication for their projects. I appreciate them.
And now we're going to recognize our six high school students who participated in the 2015 Commissioners Academic Challenge and placed second in the state.
So to flip this around a little bit before I begin, Wendy, come up. Wendy Roberts, come on up and stand beside me. So every year, we ask the board for support, financial support, to help invest in a competition that has nothing to do with the yard line or basket or goal, but about learning. And I'm most appreciative, Wendy, who has helped lead and notice also in the audience, our former Bill Hartley, who continues his support of our students in the academic challenge. Wendy, I call upon you to help with this presentation. So every year, every year, we send students, and I want you to know, when I call up to Tallahassee, every year, there's a fear of Citrus County school students fearful of that they may take the crown, and they have taken the crown. The academic challenge, we started in 1986, was designed to give students a venue for thinking competition, kind of like a quiz bowl on stairwinds. So this year, we have a team of six, four participants, two alternates, three rounds, and we compete in this trivial pursuit that goes beyond our mental thinking processes. Very challenging. We participate in Division Two in some of the highest performing districts in the state of Florida, including Clay County, Flagler, Hernando Highlands, Indian River, Leon, Martin, Ocalusa, Plutnam-St. Lucie, and the infamous Santa Rosa. So Citrus County came in second place behind Ocalusa, so congratulations for all of you. And Wendy, if you can help me with this. Right. And Wendy reminds me, and those of us who, you can watch live, by the way. Some of us watch live. You can watch live, and it was just, it was a three points, I believe. Is that Marshall three? Gosh, is that a half a question, maybe? Less than a half a question. Yeah, so from La Canto High School, Chase Fanoise. And not here, from La Canto, Nikki Craig. From Prista River High School, Erica Foster. From La Canto High School, my neighbor Marshall King. From La Canto High School, Aditi Kumar. And from La Canto High School, Matthew McDermott. So again, Wendy and Bill, thanks for always being supportive and continuing this. Congratulations. And as you take this picture, I know that you are thinking the advice you're going to give to next year's team to eke ahead those three points.
I was just thinking that, too. You know what? Mr. Gangler will go ahead. So I know I could have just left Mr. Simon up here, but I just have to tee up. This is, I think, one of, not just our favorite recognitions, but I think Mr. Simon looks all year forward to giving this next presentation. And so with that, we are going to recognize our National Merit Scholarship participants.
And I know I belabor, but I am telling you, I think we underscore the value and the achievement of National Merit Scholars. And I also will tell you that it is unusual for a county of our size to have as many National Merit Award winners, so much so that I've asked every principal, Mr. Davis, Mr. Hilger, Dr. ...
Dr. Connors, that from this point forward on their school websites. And on Citrus County, Mrs. Hemel's website, we will have a notation of our current National Merit Scholars. And our hope is that we go back and we archive all those students for not only do they represent greatness in themselves and what they will do in the future, but the National Merit Scholars also reflect great contributions of parents and of their community and of their school. Because you cannot be a National Merit Scholar unless your school qualifies and your school district qualifies. So every year, 1.5 million students take a test in October. The preliminary SAT test, the NMSQT, the National Merit Scholar Qualifying Test. Forty-five questions, doesn't seem like a whole lot. Reading, Math, and Writing, sophomore year, no big deal. Junior year, big deal. Junior year, this test score is the trigger that goes into the hands of every college/university in the United States and in the world. It also leads to who are the top scholars of America. So out of the 1.5 million, it's immediately narrowed down to the top 2% to the top 30,000. Those are the commended scholars. These are students who are recognized as achieving in the top 2% on reading and math scores of these 1.5 million students. And I am telling you, it is with humility and honor that I get to read the names as well as present the certificates to the following students. And some of these students have been participating if they look, when you see a look in their eyes when they come up, because they may have been taking all day long an IB test or they may have been taking all day long an AP test. So from LaCanto High School, Caitlin Daly. Emily Hall. Ashton Hunter. Are you weary? So Ashton, among the other two students are National Merit Commended Scholars. So Ashton, did you get, let me ask you, did you get letters from colleges? Not any that said we are interested in you or? Just want to make sure. I'm going to take that as a little bit of humility, Ashton. So stay there, Ashton, while we get. So then it goes from commended scholars to semifinalists, to finalists, to the Stanley Cup winner, the Golden Globe, the Academy Award winner. And we really are fortunate, honored, to have a young man who is the top one-half of 1% of every student that's graduating in 2015, who is an academic scholar. So Marshall, come on up here, buddy. So before you go up, Marshall, I want you to know, I know Marshall not only received invitations to come to our college, Marshall also received scholarships to go to those colleges. And I will tell you, Marshall, there's one college that's not too far from us that really doesn't give a whole lot of scholarships out, let alone the Presidential Platinum Scholarship. And that Presidential Platinum Scholarship, what's the name of that college? University of Florida, who doesn't give money away, has awarded Marshall their Presidential Scholarship. And Marshall also receives $2,500 from the National Merit Scholar Association, a nonprofit agency. So I present to you Citrus County's National Merit Scholar, Marshall King. And Marshall, as you're taking the picture, no man stands alone. The no man is an island. So his family is here, and I see them in the audience. And you'll notice those who are stretching their arms up with the camera, Phil and Karen King, would you please come up, Phil and Karen, because we want to honor you as well, because the students who achieve are because they have supportive families. And then Mr. Jeff Davis, congratulations.
Hey, Marshall, before you leave, I want to tell you, I did attend the University of Florida. I did not receive a National Merit Scholar for that, but I did wear the Albert Gaynor outfit. So when you see him on the field, that used to be your superintendent. So that should make you proud. Congratulations to all of our students. You know, when you travel around the state, and I say this over and over and over, we've got some of the greatest students, and there's lots and lots of hope for our world in the next few years and many years to come because of what you've seen today. And it's just a, it's an outcome of what our teachers do in the classroom, what our support staff does, what our administrators do, from our school board down to the students. And also a great big thanks to our community. So congratulations to all of our students. The next, I'd just like to recognize a few of our students. I meet with our students once a month, a group from each high school. And I wanted to bring them today so they could watch our school board meetings in action and also publicly recognize them and thank them again for what they've done for their individual schools. And I will first call up Mr. Hilger.
Well, good afternoon. I do have a list of names. I took a scan here to see who is here, just to make sure. Okay, I'm not going to do that for you right now.
She's just so excited about it that she just can't stand it. But you did have some other news that you wanted to share with us and make public. So I'll give you that opportunity before we move on.
As you all know, a few weeks ago, we were recognized by the, for our high schools, finishing in the top 6% of all high schools in the United States. And that is recognized by the Washington Post. And this morning, because Mr. Simon and I got a call yesterday, it said today we would know, but all three high schools today, according to U.S. World News, LaCanto High School and Citrus High School have been recognized as Silver. Crystal River High is Bronze, and Academy also is Silver. So congratulations to all of our high schools.
That's U.S. World in News. Mr. Simon, I was looking for the brain here, because he's, but I see the principals making it very clear. I actually got the news because one of you principals happened to Facebook that information. So congratulations, and we are most proud of our students and our leadership teams. We're going to move on to Business and Support Services, Mr. Blocker, with Facilities and Constructions, and Mr. Alan Burcock.
Good afternoon. Assistant at Hemel, school board members. I'm here to request approval of the Educational Plant Survey recommendations at Citrus High, Citrus Springs Elementary, Crystal River High, Crystal River Primary, District Services Center, Floral City Elementary, Inverness Primary, and LaCanto High Schools.
Board members, did you have any questions first, or did you want to go ahead and make a motion?
I'm moved to approve the Educational Plant Survey recommendations at Citrus High School, Citrus Springs Elementary, Crystal River High, Crystal River Primary, District Services Center, Floral City Elementary, Inverness Primary, and LaCanto High School.
Second? I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the Educational Plant Survey recommendations at Citrus High, Citrus Springs Elementary, Crystal River High, Crystal River Primary, District Service Center, Floral City Elementary, Inverness Primary, and LaCanto High School. Any questions or comments? Mr. Dodd.
Yes, sir. I would like to know, Mr. Burcock, a little bit more about the plant survey recommendations, how we get to that point. One of the schools that I'm a little interested in, I was visiting, Floral City Elementary School, looking at their facility. I know we had a little discussion on that with the survey. I know that's not in the five-year plan that we just talked about last month. So I was interested to find out a little bit about the survey report on Floral City, but also just in totality, the whole picture here on the survey. If you could explain that process.
Sure. Once every five years, the Department of Education requires every district to complete an educational plant survey with recommendations for new construction, renovation, and remodeling at each facility. Just because something is recommended, it's not required to be built. However, a recommendation is required if state money is used to pay all or part of that work. Our survey, I believe, we brought it to you about last June, is our five-year mark. And that survey, if you recall, was done to do the best that we could to carry forward all the recommendations of the previous survey and the MGT facility assessments district-wide that were done in 2007, 2010, and 2012. So at Floral City, the survey, in addition to this simple modification, which just adds a little piece of colored wire, still contains major remodeling, renovation, and new construction. It includes replacing the portables, the five portables. It includes renovating, remodeling, and/or constructing a new, larger cafeteria, and doing the same with the kitchen and the other core areas, guidance, administration, media.
So that's in the survey?
Correct.
Plant survey, it's just not in the five-year plan?
Five-year work plan.
Five-year work plan. How old are those portables at Floral City? Just out of curiosity, you have that?
A long time.
And we appreciate, Mr. Burcock is so good, he will not guess. He will get us the right answer.
Best to our knowledge, two have been there since 1994. However, they were switched out in 1999. Two arrived in 1996, one of which was switched out in 2006. And one has been there since 2005.
Okay, so two of them have been there since 1994.
Yep. There's been a, two of them have been there nonstop since 1994. The ones that were there in 94 were replaced in 1999.
Switched out.
Correct.
And they were switched out in 1999, but they've had portables there since 1994. They had to?
That's as far back as we can really go.
No, I guess the issue now is the student population for that school does not merit any further construction. Is that why, is that the situation right now?
Yeah, and you know what, and I can just interject on one thing. Ms. Dodd, I appreciate you bringing this up, because it happened to be, I also pulled the item as well for this very purpose. So I'm so glad you're getting to this. Mr. Burcock mentioned the MGT study, and it predates me. Ms. Bryant and Ms. Powers were the ones that were initially on the board that worked on that. And I have great respect for it, because that's really what had given us a roadmap to get through Crystal River High, Crystal River Primary, and then some of our other projects at LaCanto and so forth, and Citrus High School as well. I think you're absolutely correct in that we need to go back, I think, and look at the big picture. How does Floral City fit into our plans of, for example, if we're going by the last update on the MGT study, we have some challenges at Inverness Primary, and it's even in this survey. Well, we can only, we only have so much land there to work with. And like we've had to do when we've renovated, we've had to adjust the population. Well, we still need to do that, and Floral City is a big, really is where we have some opportunity, I think. I would really ask this board if we could give staff direction about moving forward with doing an update on the MGT study so that we can get back on that roadmap. So that, this survey is great, and I know we have to do this for compliance, but I think Mr. Dodd's asking the right question, and that is, where is all of this fitting into our master plan? And how are we, you know, we may not have it in our five-year budget, but maybe we need to be going back and re-looking at that five-year budget. And some of these are some opportunities that we need to start master planning back for. We kind of didn't have, we didn't, we had to really prioritize the last few years with our budget, but I think we need to start getting proactive again. So I guess my question is, can we move forward with maybe getting a revision on that MGT study? And it could be something that staff is involved with, if staff believes that they can be a part of that of updating it. Or maybe we contact MGT and bring them back to do some updates. And I know it's not nearly as expensive doing some of that. And I certainly, it's not that you have to give an answer today, but I would ask that maybe you at least get with the superintendent on it, get with facilities and you own, and maybe give us a recommendation of how we can, we really can move forward on that, because I think we need to. Ms. Bryant?
Just as a side note, I was wondering if the portables at Floral City and the ones at Citrus Springs, are they ours or are we leasing them? Can we sell them and make some money?
Believe, we're leasing them.
Okay. Fine.
And I do think we have them at Pleasant Grove, somebody was saying too. We own that one, yeah. But, Mr. Dodd, I think you're completely correct in that, I find kind of, you know, is Floral City, we've had those portables there for a long time, and we know we have a cafeteria issue there we need to do. We've been approving, and in fact, later, we're going to be adding, you know, even an easement to power up that waste power plant. Floral City is going to be key to an east side, you know, renovation that we need to be doing. And I think it's going to be a big part of it. We've depended on that third-party monitoring. And for those in the audience that don't know, the MGT study is an educational study as well. And, Mr. Burcock, maybe you can explain, you know, just what that MGT study will, you know, tends to provide us, because I think that helps us.
Well.
Just what the?
Every times I've been here, they've done everything from physically, go to every school, go through every room, rank each space on a number of criteria, including educational adequacy, which I think is the one you're referring to. Enter it all into a database, and we'll sort it and print it out, rate the scores on a kind of an A, B, C, D, kind of red, yellow, green, and give you a prioritization of how they recommend work gets done. That's the full-blown version. The short version is what they did in December 2012, when they came back, looked at what we'd done, looked at their recommendations, and re-recommended.
Board members, do you have any thoughts on that? Mr. Dodd, you called this too, so, you know, your thoughts on this?
You know, board member, I mean, just looking at the big picture with the schools, I mean, I look at portables as almost being a temporary fix, not a permanent fix.
It's been there a long time.
It's been, right. So I was just, you know, wanting to look, and when I didn't see, when we didn't really look at the five-year plan, and again, I understand the issue with enrollment, and we may have to rezone. I don't know where we would get to unless, you know, unless we get an influx of new people moving into the county. There's issues that we have to deal with. But I don't want to forget the Little City, that they have been patient in a lot of ways with the portables down there. And when I visited, I mean, I was very impressed. that's a great idea, that we can talk about it in the master plan, possibly it could be in the next five years.
And I, and I agree, because if you look, as Mr. Dixon's going to probably, he may give us some information, or he has given us some information, you know, we have numbers in that Central Ridge area that, that get maxed out here pretty quickly, so we will be dealing with rezoning, but as, as MGT has, has told us, you renovate before you relocate. And so we kind of, we did that with Crystal River, it was very successful, and I think we need to consider that very seriously when it comes to Floral City, and how Floral City and Inverness Primary, because they have a very symbiotic situation there, and I, I think we need some experts to, to work with us on that. So is there any more thought of that? Because if not, I think we should give direction to, to staff to move, to start moving forward on that.
What information, what statistics have changed since MGT did the report? What's occurred?
I think we've continued to experience declining enrollment would be the big one. Other than that, we've continued to do the maintenance and take care of the, the things that we believe need to be taken care of.
So, so if they look again at what's happening, focus would be looking at declining enrollment, anything else? Is that one thing, or any other projections, any other things?
They'll look at however you want to look at. They'll look at, you know, before, what we looked at was the amount of money that we had, what work needed to be done, the condition, educational suitability of the buildings, and then all that was rated into a scale, like Alan said, so that we were presented to the board with a priority list, so then you could prioritize how you wanted to spend your capital dollars. So enrollment impacts it, it's a district, enrollment is district-wide. Even if Floral City starts bursting at the seams, the first five empty classrooms and rock crushes, we're still going to have issues with trying to add seats when there's empty seats. I think the state would, would look at that and say, you need to rezone. So rezoning is a viable option, but we're not at that point yet. I don't think we're, we're over capacity at any school. I think Mr. Dixon was here.
I think that's only true.
But, so whatever you set the parameters, what do you want to look at? You want to look at the, you know, the buildings versus your capital dollars versus your projected enrollment, and get a, a list of priority projects, maintenance, renovations, you know, we can possibly look at where we, where we left off on the MGT renovations from before. That's a good place to start, take a look at those. IPS was on that list, Floral City was on that list, we, you know, we ran out of money before we ran out of work, believe it or not.
And, and that's what I think was the case. I think we were running out of money, because Floral City became a question of, okay, what do we do with the cafeteria there? What do we do? Portables was, was on that of, of, actually, that was pretty close to the next things on those lists. And then, of course, the question becomes, how does Floral City, we have to address, Inverness Primary was another big issue. Inverness Primary was not designed for the number of students that we even currently have there, or certainly plan to have there, so that becomes a question of, how do we address that? So I, I think maybe one of the things is, we probably need to get that study as a presentation, and brought back to us in a presentation.
Let's definitely focus on having that as a presentation, and then we can talk in a workshop and prioritize, and ask the questions that'll give you an opportunity, some research needed.
And we can, we can get on the calendar of whether we can sneak that into a meeting, or if we need to just put it into, to a workshop, but we'll, I don't want to wait too long on it so that we can move forward, because it takes some time to do that whole process.
It's a facilities and maintenance, so, Mr. Colosso, that same report to prioritize major maintenance projects as well, which is, I think, Citrus Springs Middle School, and that, a lot of the renovations going on this summer there were part of that MGT report as well, the original report.
And that report will go back then, when they do it, an update, and say, okay, so you've addressed these items, and the schools look like this now, and, and where we still have holes. So is there any, is, if there's any more discussion then? I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Burkhoff. Mr. Bishop, if you don't mind, what we're going to do is just hold off here, we're going to take a five-minute break, because we have a five o'clock certain, and so what we'll do is, we're going to reconvene at 5:00 PM for a presentation of the Superintendent's Making a Difference Board. We're going to be in recess until 5:00.